I did. What was that, December 29th? That meeting?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to the, to approve the December 29th, 2020 meeting minutes as written.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jim's an aye. Motion carries. Okay. Well, I'm glad you're here Ken, because there's a little bit of confusion on the the site plan review for 121 West State Street.
Yeah, I noticed that.
The building inspector is a little confused and there was, there was some verbiage in our decision. I don't see if I've got it here, hang on. Um, that it, that we stated in there, there would be no electrical or no plumbing.
Um.
So, I think that was said at one point. Either in Army, or it was translated through the, the Board of Health, that there would be no plumbing or, or electrical. That has, it really shouldn't have been in our, our, um, didn't have been mentioned because it's not in our um, if, if in fact he out had put plumbing or electrical in there, he has to pull permits and go through a whole different set of, a whole different set of procedures or process for that, which has nothing to do with us. Um, and the building inspector, because he saw that there, he just wanted
Um, so I think, um, if the, the board is treating this differently than a site plan approval for, let's say, when you, when you approve the, um, oversized barns, um, which is what you're going to be seeing in a few weeks, um, but normally in that process, understanding that the applicant didn't necessarily have plans for future use and would, would have required um, a future site plan review or a special permit depending on if they were going to introduce a new use. Um, that language is kind of carried over. So if the intent is to have this shell, building, shell, shell of a building to have plumbing and, um, electric, then that is, you know, my error. Um, but I think it, you know, my understanding based on the hearing and conversations that, you know, that we have treated this as in the past, a larger size shell, building shell, um, then we should rectify that. Um, and I don't think it, you know, it's an issue to do that, you know, the board can
Oh, let me, let me stop you. If you don't, the difference between that is special permit and a site plan review. When we, when we do this, when we issue the, um, special permit, that's with zoning board of appeals for a, a structure that's over 1,200 square feet and a residential. This was just a site plan review of, that's allowed 1,200 and above. And, and it's usually the zoning board of appeals that'll say, and the reason behind it is they don't want a, an apartment or, or something like that going in there in the future. So that's why they usually limit it to, you know, no plumbing or, or mention that there can't be any type of, uh, living, uh, accommodations made. So that's the difference between a, a pure, um, site plan review and a special permit when a zoning board of appeals is so that's, that's only, go ahead. Will?
In, excuse me, in our bylaws on page 101, under site plan review criteria, number four says, "The development shall be served with adequate water supply and waste disposal." It goes on with that. Then number eight says, "Electric telephone cable TV and other such utilities shall be underground" or physically in environment. So it does address them in our bylaws. That we should be reviewing them.
Well, there was nothing there for us to review. So, so as far as, as far as this, this is being used for private use, not for commercial.
It's his business. That's commercial.
So what are you proposing?
Well, it wasn't shown on the site plans and evidently that's something we were supposed to have been reviewing. I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, but if he's going to have water and electric in there, it should be shown on the site plan.
Um. Hmm.
According to our bylaws.
Yeah, because the, the planning board has to have the findings whether or not it complies with the site plan review. And, you know, the, and this is how your decisions have been written in the past. Um, understanding through the hearing process that we would get clarification, um, whether or not plumbing or electricity would be servicing that building. Um, I would, I mean, if the intent is to have this shell with electricity and plumbing without having to introduce a new use, where the applicant would have been required based on this decision to apply for a new permit with the planning board or the ZBA, however, it would need to get its approval depending on the use. Um, I think that maybe some clarification either in a note or, um, could be helpful, um, you know, or knowing that I, I mean, I think it's captured either way that the planning board would require a new permit for use if that is going to be the case in the future. If there's going to be, if this building is going to be built out and new business suites are going to be installed because the planning board is going to want to review the, um, additional, additional, um, businesses that are, that'll be placed there and then also the site. Um, I think with regards to this, if the planning board is under the impression that this structure will now be serviced with electricity and, um, plumbing prior to any new uses being present, then I think then some sort of presentation of, of an amendment needs to occur. And it could happen this evening.
But it's not going to show on any site plans.
Well, you can, you can condition that approval based on, um, a note being present on a, a new set of site plan that says electricity. Um, you know, or I, I think that, that can be quickly turned around. Um, the building inspector, as, as the chair had mentioned also, um, would be asking for certain um, um, building permit requirements, um, such as plumbing and electricity. I think the planning board could also condition the approval, um, the amendment with the suggestion that those permits also be attached to this. Um, I think the planning board is protected here with the, with the fact that the planning board or any granting authority would be required. Um, there would be a, a separate application that would need to be filed for any increase in use um, based on your bylaw. Um, but that's just, um, yeah. I, I don't know how the planning board wants to approach this.
So you're saying that just the letter saying, um, or revised, um, excuse me, site plan approval saying, um, contingent upon, okay, contingent upon, um, updated site plan showing water or electricity.
If that's the intent by the applicant.
Okay, but we're approving something that we're not even seeing.
Excuse me, uh, this is Steve Marion, and I'm sorry I got on late. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um, and I apologize for coming in here late and I'm, I'm catching wind of what you guys are talking about. Um, and I just want to clarify, it'll, we discussed before, earlier meetings. Uh, we definitely talked about, uh, bringing in water or what you, actually Lillian, you asked me directly if we were going to be doing that. At this point, I am not doing water plumbing in there at the building. Uh, this is to run my business out of, but I certainly always intended on having electric for, you know, to have lights in the building. I'll be honest with you, we never discussed it because I just assumed that it would be an obvious thing to have in the building. And again, this is the first time I ever ran into done something like this, so shame on me for assuming that. Um, but we all discussed no plumbing being in the building, but electricity, I all along assumed to be putting a permit in for electricity. Um, it's not on the site plan because, you know, the, that was all done for, through the, uh, associated builders that I was doing the, uh, actual construction with them, but I'm something out the electricity separate. So I didn't actually have a design for electricity. Um, I was thinking it was strictly a permit for it.
Actually, now that I think about it, electricity is required with your building permit.
Okay. So yeah, my, my intention was always to be having my electrician pull a permit for it. There's no set design of how he does it. He was planning on having it brought in and wiring and going through the electrical inspector with that. And I was under the impression that's what was, you guys, I was going to the planning board to get approval to do a building, but then electrical inspector is in charge of that portion of it. Again, that's just my assumption, that's how it was done. So I got caught off guard on this electricity portion of it.
Okay, so Steve, you're saying that, um, you're, you will have electricity, so you're not bumbling around in the dark in the building.
Correct, yeah. And, and like we talked about before, I even mentioned, you know, if I was ever to put plumbing, obviously that would be separate permits or application process down the road. Um, with the garage doors and lights in there, yeah, certainly want to have a lights in there.
So Jim and Ken, what we need to clarify with the building inspector is on the, would be, um, updated site plan approval, or I'm not sure how you do that.
Well, I, I think that what the board can do, because obviously this is approved, um, as of the last meeting, um, is to amend at this meeting, um, the finding and then, you know, that, that motion would also include forwarding that to the building inspector. Um, if there is, let's first, for instance, the, the, um, finding number eight that suggests there is no electricity serving the structure, you know, amending that language to say electric permits will be pulled to service the structure, something like that. Um, and then, you know, it'll just be an amended site plan approval and we'll get Jim to sign the new version tomorrow if the board wants to approve that. Um, but that would, I think, rectify, um, that singular issue.
To me, this sounds simple in that we, we do just what Ken said. We amend, uh, to remove, uh, the fact in, like on the first page, at the bottom of the page of the, uh, site plan approval, uh, document, there will be no electricity or water sewer infrastructure. If we were to get that out of there. And then we go down to the, uh, the bullet items. Number eight would be removed. There is no electricity serving this, servicing this structure. And, uh, somewhere in here, I saw something about anything that would involve the board, uh, the metal structure will not have any, uh, number four, the metal structure will not have any water service. If onsite waste system systems, the applicant shall submit a septic system design prepared by a certified engineer and approved by the Board of Health. I personally don't see why Steve can't have water there, meaning a hose, if he wants to wash his truck or something, but maybe I'm wrong about that. But I think we should at least make the simple amendment regarding the, uh, electricity.
I would agree on just the electricity, but not on the water. Like you said, he's not going to have water there right now and he does plan on coming back as he knows if he's going to add water in.
Uh, you know, Lil, you know what, you, I, I think that that is reasonable in the fact that Steve owns 121 West State Street. And if he wanted water or to wash his trucks, he, I assume he has the availability to do it at the existing building. Is that right, Steve?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, there's full plumbing in there. So there, there's no issue in regards to that. That's where my office is, so.
So would it please the board if I was to, uh, make a motion to amend the, uh, the, uh, site plan approval document that was, uh, let me see here, signed by Jim. Uh, it was approved on December 29th, 2020 to remove any statements regarding there will be no electricity in this metal building. What does the board think about that?
Well?
Um, I think that should cover both the, um, on the first page where it has electricity or water slash, just take out electricity there and that would take out item number eight.
Right, that's pretty much what I'm, I'm saying. However, we also have to think, uh, in the vote to approve this, and Ken, this is where you're going to come in, Lil voted no. Uh, myself, Jim and Rob voted yes. And Jason recused himself because he's a direct rebutter. How do we go about that this evening? Can Lil vote, even though she voted no against the project? Can Lil vote to allow the removal of the electricity statements? Since Rob is not here this evening?
Um, I would suggest that she would be able to, um, unless you think that it, unless the board thinks that, because it's a separate motion, it's specific to amending the original permit. Um, and if the original permit minus that language still stands, if, um, Lil is to approve that motion or approve that, then it would remove that, but also maintain the approval of the original, based on the original vote on December 29th.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to amend the site plan approval for, uh, the applicant properties plus LLC, Stephen Marion agent. Uh, the address 121 West State Street, lot one, to, uh, have anything regarding electricity or that no electricity will be servicing the structure, removed from the document that had been previously signed.
Okay, you're confusing me now.
Okay.
What is it here? Bob?
I'm, well, okay. What, how did I confuse you, Lil?
Okay, well, I was going by what you had before and then I just had a whole bunch of other detail I'm not sure we even need. So, um, how about the motion to amend the site plan approval approved on December 29th, 2020? For applicant properties plus LLC at 121 West Street Lot One, that no electricity or to remove any statements regarding there would be no electricity in this metal bit.
Correct.
Easy for you to say.
Well, I didn't pull hamstring.
And I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Lillian?
Aye.
Then I, motion carries.
Thank you.
Have we just, uh, you, Jim, you're going to sign the updated new and approved site plan approval and get it to Greg tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, so Steve can carry on.
All right, well, I appreciate that, guys.
Okay.
Glad to welcome.
Okay, the next, the next item, uh, review proposed for site plan review applicant 107, 107 R Carver Street and 39 West State Street for submittal for hearings. Okay, uh, has anybody read any of the information that was on the 107 R Carver Street?
Bob has.
Well, it appears the the owner, John Plaschek, has built a 1,500 square foot building barn and was has built it, uh, let me see, after the Granby zoning office. As the, this is from, this is from Greg. As the Granby's, I have reviewed your permission for the 1,500 square foot barn. I must deny your application according to section schedule of use regulations. A private garage or barn exceeding 1,200 square feet requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals with site plan approval from the planning board. So, I think what we need to do, seeing already there is, um, he's going to need to, to, uh, apply for a special permit with zoning and then site plan review from the planning board. And then we can turn it back to the building department vote enforcement. And then he can review it with the building.
I believe he submitted all paperwork.
I think that's a no brainer. What's that, Will?
I believe he submitted all the paperwork. We just need to set up a, um, joint meeting.
Um, I believe zoning has us to look, like, prove the site plan because they to review it and potentially approve it before they, they vote on allowing it in the zone.
What was that, Jim? You were breaking up.
The zoning board of appeals would prefer that we met and voted on it that it meets the site plan, uh, approval before they look at it and vote to allow it.
Really? We're not doing a joint meeting? We don't do those anymore?
Last I heard, they didn't want to do it. They wanted us to, to, uh, review it first. I don't know why we couldn't do it at the same, but.
Well, typically we do this in a public hearing for, uh, forum, don't we?
Yes.
Yes, your site plan review is a public hearing.
Right. So, uh, so to alleviate some costs to the property owner, rather than having, for he having to have, uh, or them, they having to have, uh, two separate hearings and notifications, dual butters, it's going to be cheaper for us to roll it all into one.
For me, and usually we do that in sequence at one meeting. Let me, let me see what's going on.
Talk to Kathy Monet, uh, Monet Bronner or Kathy Leonard?
Both if necessary.
Um, I do have a question on the site sketch, whatever it's called here. Um, were they drawn in the house and drawn in the garage?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, it doesn't say how far away from the neighbor's line, neighbor's property line. I would think that would need to be included not as a second thought in a drawing, as an official drawing. In other words, update this by whoever did it. John and Bonnie, well, it's, uh, prepared for site. Site.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to review the applicant. If they don't have adequate force on the night, then they're, you know, then we'll have to send them back. It's not all.
Well, excuse me if I may, Jim. Um, I myself, and I think I'm, I'm going to echo Lil's same sentiments. I am not overly pleased with what's been submitted regarding, uh,
Again, that's not for us.
Yeah, but should, should, don't we owe it out of fairness to the property owner? To say, you know, jeepers, we need something more detailed and accurate than a, uh, a couple of blue rectangles shown on a plot plan.
Well, that's true, but we don't, we don't on this type of thing. Hearing's been closed. We're not supposed to. So until the hearing's been opened.
Well, then technically, we shouldn't even be discussing this now, but this is more of an informal thing.
Correct.
And, and you know, just to get everybody, get all the ducks in a row, I, I
Well, this is a little bit out of the order that the structure is already in place.
Well, that, that's neither here nor there, in my mind. Uh, and, and that's not what I'm discussing. I mean, uh, I'm just looking at the, uh, the paperwork that has been submitted by the applicant regarding a, uh, oversized barn. a oversized barn. I happen to think personally, just myself anyway, that, uh, what has been submitted is inadequate and should probably be done a little bit better. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I, that's my feeling. Uh, Will, was that about what you were gonna say as well?
That's correct, but Jim, are you saying that we're not discussing this or even gonna approach that until the actual public hearing?
I don't believe we should. It's been, uh, for a, uh, for a public hearing.
Jim, could you say that again? I missed something. I, I don't know if you broke up or what.
What happened? I usually don't have any discussion before. The only discussion I have is once the, the hearing's opened. And the discussion we're having tonight is, is a, is a, is a hearing the proper way of going about this based on the structure already being built? And I would, and I would agree with you that yes, it is.
So we don't need a motion or anything to go ahead with a public hearing? Um, we just need to, I don't know, that's a decision, so we should have a motion?
I would say so.
I, boy, I don't know. I, I must be missing something here. I, you know, anybody can request a public hearing. It isn't up to the planning board to, uh, decide if they should be allowed to have a public hearing. Am I wrong?
That's right.
I mean, that's to do.
So Ken, what's your take on this?
Well, I would go based on precedence and specifically the comments by the building department that obviously the building permit is denied because um, the planning board and the ZBA need to make their approvals or, or, you know, have, have had to um, approve the, the structure or the development of the structure. Um, you know, I think this happens not often, but you know, some, and I don't know how the planning board has handled after the fact permitting. Um, obviously, it's both protective of the board and protective for the, um, the property owner and the person developing that structure. But I would say that based on the direction from the building department that, um, and this is, um, similar to previous, um, processes that you've employed for approving these types of structures, that however it looks, whether or not you do it jointly with the ZBA or the planning board or, or just, you know, as a planning board doing a site plan review, that, um, that should still happen.
So we don't need to vote?
Unless you think that they shouldn't be going through a particular, uh, this particular process, but I also don't know, um, I don't know how that could be justified.
Well, I think if.
But if you don't mind, just let the minute show that, um, the board is willing to re, to, uh, accept the application for a site plan review for a structure over 1,200 square feet, period. I guess that's.
I think, I think that's fair.
So we don't need to vote anything? Okay, fine. That ends out. And Kathy will automatically set up a public hearing, joint meeting, blah, blah?
Hopefully, correct.
Okay, we're done with that one then?
Okay, 39 West State Street. What was that?
That's the one with AJ's Auto Body. Oh, yeah.
So they were, they were renewing their license, correct? Okay, so we got two plans I'm looking at. One's dated 21 and the other one's dated 2020.
You've got plans?
Well, I've got.
Drawings.
I've got drawings, I guess you wanna call it.
I don't have those.
They were, they were with, uh, Chris Martin's letter. Did you get?
It's Chris Martin's letter?
Yeah. It's his letter to AJ's, um, saying that, uh, they renewed it, they reviewed it, but they need something from us. Um, the board voted to grant your license as long as you receive a planning board decision within 60 days by March 4th of their, of your license. And it has to deal with the amount of cars they have and where they're gonna go and all that.
And that came from Chris Martin?
No, that came from Kathy Leonard.
Okay, so let, let me, let me clarify a little bit what's taken place over the last couple of weeks.
Okay.
I received a call from individual from AJ's Auto stating that, um, they took over the formerly used by Yankee. And that they were gonna park five cars out in front where the Yankee glass was, was using for employee parking and vehicle parking. And I didn't see an issue with it until I was contacted by the select, Chris Martin's office stating that the, the site plan is, that they're proposing is showing vehicles be in park near the wetlands or it says under repair. And that's gonna require a site plan review by the board, whether or not they're gonna allow it or not. The additional parking and the vehicles over on that other, what would you call that, Bob? The, uh, west side of the building?
I'm sorry, Jim, I, I lost you there for a minute. What, what was that?
So they're showing three, six, seven vehicles parked the west side of the building.
Yeah.
Over by the, the wetlands area.
Right.
That's contrary to what he told me on a phone conversation, and it's totally different than the, that was approved in 2020.
Okay, and your question to me is, was, what?
That it, that it's gonna require a site plan review? Because it, he's not, he's not using existing space. He's ex, he's, uh, added three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine parking places, seven of which are for, uh, uh, vehicles under repair and it's, it's over by the wetlands. And then there's two additional ones on the, on the, uh, same side of the building, but.
Yeah, he's gonna need a site plan approval.
Correct.
You know, uh,
That is where we're.
Go ahead.
2020, he's got five.
One, two, three.
He's got three additional spaces by the island up front. And he's showing three spaces, a building in the front of the building for cars under repair.
I thought all cars under repair were supposed to be behind the building.
That's, that's what I'm alluding to.
Hmm.
So we don't wanna discuss this either because we're gonna have to have a public hearing, right?
Well, that's, well, correct, because Chris, you're right. Chris sent it to us asking for a letter that we're okay with it, and we, and we can't, in other words, we can't respond to them with a letter because it's gonna require a site plan review. So yes, that's probably enough discussion. That's, I'm just giving you the reasons why, because I have the plans in front of me, why I believe he, he needs a.
Bob, I resent you Kathy's email with all the details.
Oh, thank you, Will. Oh, there it is. Thank you.
So are we saying the same thing is, uh?
So, okay, let the minute, let the minutes reflect that AJ's Auto is gonna need a site plan review for the, uh, the changes he's, he's requiring, requesting for his permit.
Has the board approved this before?
For them?
Has the board approved this use before, prior to this new owner coming on board? Like. Same owner. Um, but they, they, so did they have a previous approval of this site by the board?
This board, but yes, previously they did have for the, for this, for the site plan that they've been using up until this year.
And that would have been a long time ago.
Um, I guess, you know, just, just a comment, um, with regards to how your bylaw is written and specifically the use table that, um, Kathy Leonard has put on this email to the board. If, if your determination has been that it only requires a site plan approval, then, you know, that this conversation has ended. But there's also sale of used motor vehicles, and I'm not sure if we're to have taken that into consideration prior to approving it the first time.
Well, the licensing authority, or oh, they'll only license them for what planning board approve them for, for the site plan. That's, that's.
So Ken, you're saying this because of the two different situations, it needs both a special permit and a site plan approval?
I, I mean, I'm just reading based on 3.5.10 on this citation that Kathy Leonard put in her original email, um, that because the site plan has suggested the sale of used motor vehicles, and I don't see that it's being incidental to new vehicles, um, based on this, uh, that the board may choose to go through a site, special permit process rather than a site plan process. But that's just big time on that.
Right, if you, if you look at 3.5.8 auto service station auto repair shop, that just gets a, that gets a site plan approval. But when you add in sale of used motor vehicles, 3.5.10, that says special permit. So if they're doing both things, according to our chart, they would need special permit and site plan approval. Am I not reading it correctly?
Well, assuming that it would, it would require a special permit, oh, through the special permit process, you would, uh, you would also, review a site plan, because that probably is the, um, the, uh, the mechanism by how you're going to base your approval, but I would, yeah, I mean, I would suggest that based on the way your bylaw is written, that you probably would go through both of those processes.
Right, so we would need real plans, not the drawn, not the drawings we have here.
Well, the board can, the board can still evaluate them based on the original application. It, whether or not the board feels content to make their determination based on that, that's the other thing.
With the wetlands involved?
Oh, well, then that's important to note, especially where, yeah, if there's gonna be new, you know, um, eh, new expansion of property or, you know, new paving, whatever. Or if, if, I mean, and the board can make the determination based on, you know, if it's just the fact that the select board's letter suggests that there are some additional cars being sold, um, the board can take that into consideration as well. If there are other, other, you know, um, criteria that are important to, to know, like what the, the wetlands on site, if there's gonna be an expansion of the property in any way, then more than likely, you'd be asking them for some additional plans.
Well, so, so they're licensed to sell cars. And they're not changing that. They're just sliding them down the building because they took possession of the rest of the building. So I don't think they're, they need a, uh, special permit. But they do need a site plan, in my opinion, because of where they're.
Well, not, not necessarily, because they requested from the select board to go up in the number of cars that they're allowed to have for viewing for sale. Which is what kind of, what's that? Say that again, please?
Find the original permit.
Of
2020.
No more than six used motor vehicles for sale at one time.
Correct. But I'm looking, I'm trying to read the, the 2020 permit.
Oh, the one that's all kind of blacked out.
No, that one says six too.
Right, but I believe as I have watched a select board meeting that, uh, AJ's was going for additional cars for sale, and that is what triggered this whole response from the, uh, the town administrator slash select board.
Well, the, the the site plan doesn't, doesn't show a difference.
Jim, I believe the permit that we can hardly read is just, um, the same, the January 4th, 2021, but with signatures on it.
Oh, that's a different 2020.
That's what it looks like to me. If you really stare at the dates, you can see the exact same date. And down the very bottom, it says this license expires January 1, 2022.
Thank you.
I think we need the original site plan approval.
Probably.
I can check with, uh, Kathy Kelly Reagan to see if she has it.
On the, on the letter from Chris Martin to, uh, AMAJ Inc. AMAJ Inc., um, it says, as the board did not want to affect your ability to sell used cars effective 1121, they approved your class two license. However, they also did so contingent upon your scheduling a meeting with the planning board and receiving written determination as to the additional vehicles to be allowed on the site. So he was requesting more vehicles on the site.
Yeah, but not, he is Bob, but from the, and it's not for sale. Sale, it's for under repair and customer parking.
And you're getting that from the plan?
I'm, from the plan I'm looking at. The way he has them labeled. So it doesn't, unless, you know, we'll have to pull up the, the original, uh, site plan approval, but it, it doesn't appear to me that he's asking for additional, uh, for just additional cars for, um, customers and cars under repair.
Well, I thought the select board was looking at, or he was, the select board was being requested to up the number of cars that he could have for sale. And that's how this thing, uh, all came about. Well, we need, we need plans. You know, they show the wetland and property lines, I, you know, all that stuff, I guess.
Would agree.
So how do we make that, uh, known to AMAJ Inc.?
Yeah, so, hang on a second, just reading something. I just, I would let the minutes reflect that, um, the planning board is requiring a site plan review.
Okay.
Should we, uh, have a caveat, have a caveat in there, you know, showing all, uh, structures, pavement, wetlands, property lines?
Well, if they follow the, the, um, wording in the bylaws, that's what's needed for a site plan.
Yeah, I would just leave it at that. I would, in case we lost something.
You know what? Okay. Okay, maybe that's what, you, you are correct. Let the minutes reflect it. Uh, they have to file for this, uh, and follow the bylaws of the town of Granby. Perfect. In accordance with the bylaws of the town of Granby. Right?
Okay.
Okay. All right.
We've got that, Tom. Okay, uh, does everybody have the letter from, uh, for the 202 upgrades? Mas B O T?
Yes, I did see that.
Got it.
Well, all I have the affected area. We don't have detailed plans.
I think what they're looking for is just our, our comments as to would be nice to have this or that in, in that area before they make the plans.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a, let me check, let me check, check, check. With, uh, Dave DeRosa or Kathy, and see if they've got, I'd like to request stuff that's already, already.
Well, they don't even have a timeframe on this. And they don't even ask, you know, for, uh, uh, any, well, they asked for a response. Um, but they don't set a time, a deadline on it. As to when the, uh, the comments should be received.
Yeah. Let's see if we can get some information on it. Let's see if we can get some more detailed information. Oh, one of my, one of my issues is making sure that the sidewalks are on the, the, at least, at least from Finn's Hill to Granby's five corners area is on the same side. Now, I don't want to make comments on something that may or may not.
But this is going from Kendall Street to School Street, Jim. This isn't, uh, uh,
Granby High, yeah, you're right. So we don't have everything.
Right.
Well, the same, the same thing would go from the schools, which, you know.
Right.
And I guess I'd like to know what, you know, from Dave, who's responsible for, you know.
Who's responsible for what?
Painting them.
It would be the residents.
Now, yeah, we need more detailed plans because I'm told that there's a cul-de-sac or a roundabout going at the, uh, School Street intersection.
That is correct.
Doesn't really identify any detail on it.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I guess, uh, I thought they were working their way from South Hadley in this direction. Did they already?
Two separate projects. Number one was, uh, uh, the roundabout at the, uh, School Street, uh, 202 intersection. And then, you know, paving from, uh, through South Hadley up Route 202 in, in Granby.
Well, I'm sure DeRosa's got some detailed plans to look at, interested in commenting on anything.
So what do you want to do with it for us?
You can give me an action item to, to see if we, I can get some plans situated. Okay. That leads us to further discussion about bylaw amendments and. So, oh, you, you've had a conversation with the select board's office about potential meeting?
Yes, you got my email there? I sent it to them. I proposed timeline.
So they're, they're thinking of a May 10th meeting?
They are, but they cannot guarantee it because of COVID-19. So it's kind of, we could, we could follow the timeline and, which means we'd have to do everything in February to get ready for any public hearings. Uh, and that way we'd be ahead of the game if they don't have it in May. If we do have it in May, we'd be right on time. Bob, did you get that email?
Yes, I did. I'm looking at it.
Jason, did you get the email?
Yes, I did, Bob. So what? Let's, let's, let's say we're to do, what? What were the zoning items we were looking at and what were the, uh, bylaw changes we were looking at?
Oh, let me see. I've got it here somewhere.
I knew you would.
I had everything ready and we had one set of minutes where we, we, we reviewed all of the zoning bylaw changes, potential that we were working on.
Now, are we just talking bylaw changes? Are we, we talking, uh, zoning changes as well?
Well, that's why, that's why I want to get the whole list out. Okay. Let's, let's prioritize. Okay.
Yes, okay. On our working session, let me open this up. On way back on July 22, um, first one was extending zoning district, industrial number one to the South Hadley line along New Ludlow Road.
Correct.
Next one was East Street, Westover Metropolitan District rezoning. That would be in two pieces.
Correct.
Would be increased in size or oversized barns. And the next one is outdoor venues. And, um, small scale solar insulation screening. Stormwater management, I don't think we're going to be able to get in before, um, the May meeting. Because, um, Dave DeRosa is still working, waiting for Chris Martin to point a committee to work on that.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that has to be done by July or something. And then the other thing we have to do is, uh, a master plan update, but I think, uh, Ken, you're part of that with this.
Um, is that the, um,
That would be the zoning bylaw amendment for mixed use?
Oh, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, that's enough. Yes. Now, now, in addition to that, Ken, you, I thought you were keeping a running list of things that needed to be corrected that were in conflict within the bylaws. Don't we have a list of that?
Um, that was specific to the, um, I don't have, I mean, I have the, that was specific to the mixed use document. Where the, the conflict of the site plan review process in the mixed use district versus your site plan review process.
Correct. But weren't there some other areas that we were in conflict with the, with the narrative versus the chart that we reviewed?
Uh, there is, there is one with the, um, solar being, um, allowed. Canopies in, being allowed in the general business district.
And I believe if I look back at my files, I should have something too. We had this conversation with regards to a permit that the planning board approved last year or the year before, um, which was for a home-based business. Um, that I think there was some sort of determination on whether or not it was a professional office. And I think some of the language in the bylaw, um, can be interpreted two different ways, um, which with regards to medical offices, we might want to just review that.
Yeah, I remember that one.
Well, I would just assume move forward with this, with the anticipation that there will be a May 10th meeting. And, and at least we've got, if there isn't one, so be it. We have no control over that. In that way, at least we've got everything lined up. We've completed everything. And, uh, we're just waiting to be told when COVID will go away.
Right. So that means we can only do the first step as in getting them ready. We can't hold any public hearings because then you have to have the final meeting within a certain amount of days after the public hearing, so.
Okay, that was, that was going to be a question. Is there a timeframe? And I, I believe Ken just said six months?
That's correct, after the public hearing.
Okay. But that's, that's okay. At least we've got our groundwork, legwork done. And it's just sitting waiting for, uh, uh, public input.
Okay. So are we, do, do we want to have a, a work session to go through these? So we're not, we're not?
I would say we should have at least one. We only got the month of February.
Right.
So here's, here's what I would recommend. Rezoning, I think Ludlow Road should be an easy, an easy one to get, to get that little, that, that area over there that's, that's, uh, by itself, and it was recommended by the, the, um, Economic Development Committee to get that zone. I think the oversized buildings we should take a look at. The outdoor venues. I think I've got some ideas on that. Look at that. And then.
What about East Street?
Um, if we've got time for it, I'd say, hey, we can go ahead and take a, take a, take a deeper dive into that one. There will be a little bit more, a little bit more involved. And then take a quick look at all the, the the bylaw, uh, conflicts between the charts and the narratives. The stormwater manager table, mass plan, mixed use, that's kind of table to solar, uh, general business. We can take a look at that after I get the bylaws.
The, the small scale solar screening?
Yes.
You want to do all of that in one meeting?
I think we can get through quite a bit if we do a little bit, give it a little bit of thought. I don't think any of these, the, the New Ludlow Road zoning is pretty easy. I don't think any of these, the, the New Ludlow Road zoning is pretty easy. The oversized buildings, I think we can, we can come up with some, some language that allows up to X amount of square footage based on, based on acres. And if you're sitting on three acres, put a 1,200. Raise the threshold, 1,200 may be good for a 40,000 square foot lot. But, you know, three acres, you should be able to put it, you know, with a site plan approval, should be able to put a a 2,000 square foot building in or something along those lines.
Ken, you probably can dig up samples from other towns on that?
Yeah.
So we don't have to, Will?
So, not to be the bringer of bad news, but the board may need to look at its floodplain district. There is some the, the state, the state released model bylaw, zoning bylaw for floodplain overlay or floodplain development so that the new bylaw needs to be compliant with the FEMA standards. So we can dust that off because the, the town will be receiving within the next two, three years new floodplain maps. So that's just something to keep in the back of the mind.
So should we address that now? And do you have any information you can send us on that?
Yeah, I can send that to you and you, we, I think the board can determine where it wants to, you know, place in the priority. But the important thing is that it needs to be, that those amendments need to be completed by the time the new maps are arrived. But many communities in the Commonwealth are currently amending their bylaws prior to town meeting or this, early this year, and that's in their plans this year in anticipation of the new maps. So, but I'll, I'll provide some handouts and for that effort.
So Jim, do you have a date in mind for a special working session?
I'm open to the majority of the board when they want to have it. Evenings, I'm, I'm pretty flexible.
I'm pretty open too.
I, I as well.
Yeah, I can, I'd prefer an evening if possible, but if, you know, we estimate something, I'm flexible.
Okay, how, what time in the evening? Is five o'clock too early for you?
No, that's perfect.
Ken, do you have any days we should stay away from?
Mostly, so it's the first and third Tuesdays and the first and third Wednesdays. Those are my other planning board meetings that I have. So those would, those, and those are evenings. I mean, if we're having a five o'clock, for the most part, I should be pretty clear. There's a couple of dates later in the month where I won't be able to attend the 5:00 PM because I'll have some outstanding meetings. But I think if the board can determine a date now, I should be able to put that in the calendar.
So if we did like Thursday, February 4?
Thursday, well, that, that's actually the only day that I can't. Yeah. Yeah.
Then how about Thursday, the 11th? Are we waiting too long at them?
Yeah, what, what, what day will work for you next week?
For me next week, Monday, Wednesday and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Bob would like to stay away from Tuesday if possible. I may have a tentative Board of Health meeting.
Monday. Then, and then and then let's tentatively schedule one for Wednesday for any follow-up.
Okay.
We can keep them short.
Yeah.
And that way there, you know, if we get ahead of this, it's better to put the time in now.
Okay. Monday, February 1 and Wednesday, February 3.
Yes. Short and productive.
I'll send everybody what I have, so you at least have some reading beforehand, someplace to start. Um, I have one other thing that has nothing to do with zoning. Do we care?
Of course I do. For everybody, everybody cares.
I don't know, Kathy has a, are you at the library?
Yes.
Okay, does Kathy give you a folder?
Yes.
You have an email from her or an inter-office memorandum about the annual town report?
I'm digging. Okay, happy new year to this show. The annual town report must be submitted to the Select Board's Office by February 19.
Okay, I have already started on it and I will have it ready for the next regular meeting.
Great.
So we can, you know, tweak the wording a little more, but just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Will. I don't know what we do.
I'm sure you'll find out.
Pardon me?
I'm sure at some point you'll find out. That's all I have.
Was that a threat, Will?
Oh, I take that back. I have one more thing. PVPC. DLT program notification. Sent that one out today. A request due by Friday, February 5. I don't think that's much of an advance notice. It says, notice. But we've got two weeks to figure out if we want to submit anything. And it will probably have to be in conjunction with the Select Board again. So whether or not we get what we actually asked for depends on what is submitted.
Okay, so maybe that should be one of the meeting agenda items on the February 1 meeting along with bylaw review.
Works for me.
Good with that.
Does anybody have any suggestions at this point in time?
Not me. There are different categories that you pick from.
Right.
Have to go by that.
Well, last year, wasn't it the selectman who basically chose and we didn't have a say in it?
That would be correct. Well, I, well, it's what was submitted by Chris Martin.
Yeah, we've done it. We've submitted in the past for like our, our So let's, let's review it on Monday.
Well, well, depending on how a town meeting goes, our permitting guide is going to have to be upgraded.
Right, and between Kathy and myself, we can do that.
Okay. Is there any column in there that we can use for a master plan?
In the DLTA?
Yeah.
Ken, planning ahead for growth?
Yeah, you can. Some communities have done that. I believe that's what helped fund, funded your land use element in 2016. So you could maybe look at economic development or if you want to look at housing. You know, if there's individual elements, but probably not a full master plan. And many communities will often approve it or often apply for DLTA looking at individual elements.
Okay. Well, there's a thought.
Right, and if our, if we happen to choose an element of our master plan and it matches up with another town, it has a better chance of getting approved. Am I right, Ken?
It has in the past.
You mean if, if a town, another town is doing a similar element?
Yes.
It may, but I guess, you know, through experience of your board, maybe that was the case. I, I don't know.
Did that a couple
Jim, are you moving around?
Bob was.
Okay. Well, now really, that's all I have.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion with anything else? Okay. All in favor? Bob?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
And Jim's an aye.
Have a good evening, all.